Evening, everyone. Welcome to our second meeting of December. And we've got a long agenda, so let's get the show on the road.
Hey, good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Council of the City of Long Beach on Tuesday, December 21st, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Over the call, Councilmember Delory.
Present.
Councilmember Mandell.
Present.
Councilmember Trastan.
Here.
Vice President McGinnis.
Present.
President Bendo.
Present.
Let the record indicate the presence of City Manager Donna Gaden and Assistant Corporation Council Chuck Geiger. One hour of salute to the flag.
All right, we're going to ask our guest corp council, Chuck, to lead us in the pledge.
Okay, I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck.
And let's see, why don't we start with our report from the, and Liz is shaking her head no at me. All right, you want to do the other thing first. So since this is our second meeting of December, this is also going to be our send off for Councilman Mandell and Councilmen's, Mandell and Delory. So we just wanted to take a moment and thank them. And I guess we'll start with you, Karen. I was going to say a little bit about Mike.
Sure. So, Mike, you ready to be roasted? I can't even get to see you in person, huh?
Bring it on, Karen.
On the video, huh? Um, Mike, these past two years have been quite a ride. You've been a true team player since day one and a pleasure to work with. You've used your expertise, extensive expertise professional in, their extensive professional municipal finance background to help us meet our objectives and have relentlessly kept us focused on fulfilling the New York State Comptroller's Office various recommendations. Parking meters, anyone? You have been innovative, including facilitating the $300,000 donation in naming rights for the new lifeguard station. You're also a fun colleague. Your appropriate level levity at city council meetings has helped us to not let us take ourselves too seriously as we climb out of this mess we were handed. But this is not goodbye. I know you will stay active in your many civic organizations as well as here at City Hall to help your beloved city. Mike, you are the best of Long Beach. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve with you on this particularly transformative council, and you will be truly missed. That's it.
And we have a fine plaque. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, everybody. And I greatly appreciate it. And I'll still be around.
I know you will. You know, we need you.
Thank, thank you.
And moving on, Bendo, you're on mute.
The host muted me. Is that you, Dave? So I guess we have some guest commentary that Liz is going to read.
I'm going to read from former councilwoman Fran Adelson. I personally like to thank Scott Mandell for his years of service as a Long Beach City Councilman and former City Council President. I was fortunate to serve with Scott for four of those years. It is said that the true measure of a person is not what they say or do when situations are good, but what they say or do when faced with strife. After the worst crisis in Long Beach, Superstorm Sandy, Scott's leadership was a huge force in the driving of the city's recovery. His commitment has never waned. As former and present city council members know, you cannot please everyone. You do your best, you have a conscience, and you truly serve with the best interests of the city as a whole. I believe that it is Scott's legacy to the residents of Long Beach. On a personal note, I'm grateful for his friendship and wish him his family great success and happiness on their future journeys. Are you crying, Scott?
Not yet, we didn't get to the agenda. But all, thank you.
And I just want to add too about Scott, since I guess out of everyone up here, he and I have served together the longest. You know, I was, I was a thorn in Scott's side long before I got on the city council. But the one thing that I always highly respected Scott for is even when you didn't agree with him on a position on something, when a meeting was over and most of the council went running out the back, down the back stairs to avoid talking to people, he always was the guy that stuck around and would talk to people. And I always respected that about him. He didn't shy away from his positions. And he always, you know, would sit there and explain them to you. And maybe you wouldn't come to agreement, but you could at least walk a way knowing you could agree to disagree in a respectful, likeful manner. And when I got on the council, you know, Scott sort of in some ways became a mentor. I learned a lot from him. He was a confidant and a counselor in giving advice. Of course, he has a lot of institutional knowledge, which was useful. And, and that, that will be missed. And again, you know, we may have not always agreed on every position, but we always came away respecting each other and liking each other, which is more of what we should see in politics. So I just want to also say thank you. 10 years, by the way, we haven't said that, 10 years he's been doing this. So we also got a plaque for Scott as well. But I don't know if people appreciate what 10 years of people complaining to you is like. So I'm sure, Scott's grinning, so.
Well, for any indication, I'm actually 26 years old, and this is what I look like.
Yeah. So thank you for your years of service to the city.
Thank you. First, thank you, Fran Adelson. I don't know if you're watching tonight, that totally caught me off guard. And John, thank you for those kind words, and I appreciate it. I have something I prepared that I'd like to read at the end. I don't want to take up the agenda time with your permission.
Okay.
That's okay. So thank you.
All right, so with that, why don't we move on to the city managers' report?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you. We have one presenter tonight, that's Mr. John McNally.
Good evening, all. I will keep it brief. I'll start with the heavy and get to the more lighthearted. City managers just asked me to give updates on a few matters. First and foremost, our COVID stats. As of the 19th, which is this past Sunday, vaccination rates for Long Beach's total population stood at 68.9%. So slowly but surely, we are creeping up to 70%. In terms of new cases and positivity, the week ending the 20th, there were 153 new confirmed cases in Long Beach. On a statewide level, though, and even locally, statewide, we've looked at four straight days of record number of positive cases in the state. That's from the beginning of the pandemic. There were 3,500 new cases on Long Island yesterday alone. The seven-day positivity rate, so that's the smoothed out average over a seven-day period, stood at 9.8% for Long Island. And that's trending in the wrong direction. Yesterday alone was 11.8%. If there is a silver lining to this, it is that hospitalizations are about on par with where they were last year. And last year, we did not inundate our hospital system. We got no worse than 22% of ICU beds being available. So if, if the real stress of all this to get through the pandemic is not to overly burden our hospitalization system, we do have some hope on that front. As tonight's meeting is, obviously, we moved to virtual for all of the preceding reasons. Inauguration, which was slated for January 1st, is not going to be an in-person event. That will get postponed until such time that we can properly commemorate that. But there will be swearing in of our new council members and our returning council members, obviously. So we'll get information out on that once all of it is finalized. On lighter notes, the calendar, the city calendar is now out. It has dropped. It should be at everybody's homes. If you did not receive one or if you want a backup, they are available at City Hall or at the rec center. Voting for our holiday decorating contest has begun in earnest. You can go to the city's Facebook page. There's 15, 20 or so homes that did a really bang-up job decorating for the holidays. And this is just a really good sort of community event. So we encourage everybody to go to the Facebook page and vote for their favorite homes. Beach passes as gift certificates started going on sale last week, and they are available until the 24th. If you go to longbeachny.gov/Beach, it has the schedule for the remaining dates and times that those beach passes are on sale. Obviously, a pretty wonderful holiday gift. And last, but certainly not least, kudos to Carrie Anne in our events department and also works hands in glove with, with the public relations team. We went live with an updated and completely revamped website yesterday that takes us well into the 21st century. It makes a lot of what used to be multiple clicks in order to navigate the site, single clicks. It's a lot more visually appealing. It's a lot more streamlined. There's a lot more iconography. It's a lot clearer and it's a lot more transparent. So kudos to them. This is, as we are, you know, launching a new website, though, we do fully expect that there to be some bumps in the road. So this is a start out for it. There is a banner along the top of the website saying any feedback or any, you know, errors or problems that you run into, please report them to us. But we believe it's a significant step in the right direction. So again, Carrie An Troy and Tracy Murray did a bang-up job on that. We are thankful to them for it. So check out the website when you get a chance, and that's what I have.
That ends my report.
All right, thank you, Donna. Then why don't we move on to the agenda?
Okay, our first item this evening is a public hearing for a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements for premise 232 West Park Avenue, Long Beach, for a convenience store.
Okay, so let's open that public hearing and.
Yep, I'm looking for the proprietor. If you can use the raise your hand function so I could find you in the list. We have a lot of people on here tonight. I saw you on here before. Bear with me one second.
I just elevated him, Dave.
Okay. Okay, I believe the proprietor is on?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, and thank you for joining us. So, okay, we see that you're going to be opening a convenience store. For, for those just watching online, we're talking about the location of 232 West Park Avenue. It used to be the Asahi Cafe. And, all right, so can you just tell us a little bit about your business?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm trying to open a convenience store, so I need to get permission for that.
Okay. So do you anticipate being open seven days a week?
Yeah, I wish I opened seven days a week, 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, but I will follow the town rules.
Okay, great. And how many employees do you anticipate having?
It's only me and my husband right now, maybe later. Yeah, because this is a new business and we don't hire any employee yet.
Okay. And do you expect to get deliveries at the store? And if so, about how often?
Maybe two to four time in a month.
Okay. All right, great. All right, do any of the council members have any questions? Okay, so hearing done. Dave, let's see if there's just any questions from the public.
All right, folks, once again, if you do want to speak on any item tonight, when we call for comment, just please use the raise your hand function, and then we'll call on you one at a time and enable you to speak. Right now, we have, nobody has their hands raised, so we're good.
Okay, great. Then why don't we close the public hearing? And why don't we go ahead and vote on that item right now so the owner can have her answer right away?
So this is, this is voting, and this public hearing goes along with item number two, which is a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements for premise 232 West Park Avenue, Long Beach, New York, for a convenience store. Who would introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Do I have a second?
I will.
I'm sorry, Scott.
Please.
Okay. Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes, and welcome to Long Beach, and we wish you much luck.
Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, and have a wonderful night.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Good night. Okay, and let's move on to the next public hearing.
Okay, our second public hearing is for a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements for 28 West Park Avenue, second floor, for a yoga studio.
Okay, and why are you getting that person on? So that.
John, you beat me to it, okay. Elena, are you on?
Yes, good evening, everybody.
Good evening. So just for the, so people listening know, this is a 28 West Park Avenue. It used to be a children's daycare and proposed to be a yoga studio. So could you just tell us a little bit about the business?
Sure, it will be a yoga studio, mostly vinyasa, stanga yoga. We plan to be open seven days a week. 8:30 to 9:00 PM would be our operating hours. And any of you are welcome to come in and take a pre-class.
Well, thank you. And about how many employees do you anticipate having?
We're going to be two employees that are regular. The yoga teachers, most of them would like to stay freelance, so they will be like a traveling kind of gig. But two to three employees would be the ones that are staying there the whole time.
Okay, and when you're teaching classes, about how many people do you anticipate being in, in business?
Well, hopefully, you know, it all depends on how people like it and how many want to do yoga. But at maximum customer capacity would be about 45 people because there's two rooms, there's one room in the front and another room in the back.
All right, great. All right, any questions from the council members? Seeing none, Dave, any from the public?
No hands raised at this time.
All right, so let's close that public hearing and let's vote so Elena can get her answer now.
Okay, so we're voting on, this public hearing is along with item number three, which is a resolution granting waiver of Wall Street parking requirements for premise 28 West Park Avenue for a yoga studio. Would you introduce and move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, my pen won't write. Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes, and again, thanks for opening up in Long Beach.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
All right, have a great night.
Thanks, you too.
All right, and let's move back to the rest of the agenda.
Okay, moving on to the regular calendar. Item one is approval of minutes for prior meeting, November 17th, 2021. Got a motion to approve?
I'll make one, I just got one minor correction on page two. Just a spelling at the bottom, it references Jason Katz. In Long Beach, it just says B-E-A-C, just we have to add the H on beach.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay, we've already voted on items two and three. Item four is a local law amending subpart C of related acts related to the charter of the City of Long Beach regarding a local law opting out of licensing and establishing onsite cannabis consumption establishments within the City of Long Beach pursuant to Cannabis Law Section 131.
With Mr. Bendo's permission, I'd like to make a brief statement.
Sure, go ahead, Chuck.
Yeah, just, you know, this is, it can get a little confusing with the terminology, but this is a vote to opt out. So a yes vote would be the city opting out, and a no vote would be the city not opting out. I just wanted everyone to make sure that they understood that before we went on. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thanks, all right. So we already held two public hearings on this, so, and, and they've been closed. So, you know, we're not going to be doing more comments tonight because we've already had the two public hearings. So I guess we can move on to item five.
Item five is a local law amending subpart C of related acts related to the charter of the City of Long Beach regarding a local law opting out of licensing and establishing retail cannabis dispensaries within the City of Long Beach pursuant to Cannabis Law 131.
Okay, I guess the same rule applies, Chuck. The yes vote is to opt out.
Correct.
Okay, and same, you know, we, like I said, we had, we've already had the two public hearings on this. So we can move on to item six.
Okay, item six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend an agreement with Corp BTS, a partner of Cisco Systems. And let me bring up.
It would be Jamie or Ron.
Yeah, I'm bringing both of them up, just trying to find, try to find them in the list. We have a lot of people on tonight. Okay, I believe both are up.
Hey, Jamie.
Good evening. So we originally met in November, I believe it was, for the phone system to upgrade it to a cloud-based system. Unfortunately, the quote that we got was misquoted, and voicemail was not included in there. And they undershot the number of phones we actually have as full-time phones. So they were seeing about 100 of our phones as common space phones, is what they call it, which means it could be a conference room, it could be an office that has multiple people using the same phone, so on and so forth. So they misquoted it, and apparently it was an insider error. They used the wrong quote. The engineer who originally created our quote actually built our system, so he knew that we did use voicemail and knew the phones. But apparently, they didn't use that quote when they did our, our quote. So it was re-quoted for the correct number of licenses and phones, and the annual cost increased to $34,452. The original quote was $38,192, and that was including the professional services. This is not including the professional services. So we went back to Cisco because that price for, for the 209 phones was pretty high. And we met with the Cisco engineer to try to come up with a better option, and they presented us with an enterprise agreement, which requires us to sign up for a three-year agreement at a minimum of 250 phones. I'm sorry. A minimum of 250 phones, and it would entitle us to better pricing. The new quote is a monthly cost of $2,402 plus an estimated usage charge of 200, making it $2,602. So for the first year, it would be $31,230. With the professional services, it would be $53,750. The EA would actually save us about $3,222 annually from the, the corrected quote they gave us. So they would, there's a difference of $3,222 by going with the enterprise agreement. The total for the three years would be $107,377.92. The increased number of phones would allow us to get rid of a full bill that we have Windstream, our phone services, we would be able to port all those numbers on to the Cisco cloud and eliminate that bill, which is roughly $3,900 a month for an annual cost of $46,800. So when you add all that together, the phone system and the, and the bill, the phone bill, currently, we would, we are paying for licensing phone service a total of $63,090. So we'd be saving in the first year $9,340, and the following two years, we would be saving $31,860. If we were to remain status quo as we are now for the three years, we would need to upgrade the hardware at about $125,000 for the server. So we're looking at about $314,270, which would, we would not be paying. And that would be a savings of $198,060 for the three years by not staying status quo as we are now.
I could just jump in there too, Jamie. Basically, this gives us a lot more flexibility, and that actually gives us the ability to bring our two sides of the city together. You have City Hall, and then you have all the outside phones as well. All those come together. We have a one-time implementation fee, and even with that fee, we're still saving $9,340 in the first year. And it was actually a good thing for us when they actually made that mistake, are not giving us the voicemail, because we revisited and recognized that if we went to an enterprise, we got more phones for less money and greater flexibility for the city, which that in turn turned out to be almost a $200,000 savings over the three years of the contract. And that'll go all forward each year going forward. Nice talking, Jamie, thank you.
All right, any questions from the council members?
I just have one, John, it's Mike Delory, thanks, Jamie and Ron. When you mentioned going to an enterprise system, you mentioned Windstream, is this also under Windstream or is it a Verizon system?
No, it's, Windstream would be the bill we'd be eliminating. So all those numbers would be ported over to the Cisco system.
Cisco, okay. And I know, Jamie, don't, you don't have to answer this per unit, but basically, when you go to a, more lines, your cost per line decreases. Would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, that's it. And thank you both.
Councilman, that's exactly what happened when we, we were so close to the number of lines in the enterprise that by going up in the number of lines, we went down in cost for the city.
Well, we always like saving money, so. All right, any other questions from the council? Well, we always like saving money, so. All right, any other questions from the council? All right, seeing none Dave.
President Bendo, I just want to say, I think a lot of credit needs to be given to Jamie on this and he really worked very diligently on this. This was a tremendous undertaking to get this done. So, you know, as the temporary director for IT with him, he did a fantastic job and I think the council should know that he's really working on to save the city money.
Great, thanks Jamie.
Thank you.
All right, Dave, do we have any questions from the public?
Yes, we have two hands raised. Doran Lyon.
Okay.
Go ahead Doran, you're allowed to speak. You had to unmute yourself. And remember folks, you still get three minutes. You'll hear, when we hit the three-minute mark, you'll hear the alarm going off in my background. Doran Lyon, going once.
Oh, I'm here, I'm here. I don't know how to unmute.
Oh, you're unmuted.
I don't know how to unmute.
You're unmuted. Yes, we can.
Yes, you can. Hold on, I gotta make this small again. I've never been in a Zoom format like this, so it's very confusing for me. The controls are all different. All right, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, I can hear you very well. All right. So the subject I wanted to talk about was this opting in or opting out.
This isn't the type of that. You could do that in Good and Welfare, but right now we're only talking about this particular agenda item.
Okay, I rose my hand on the opt-in, opt-out agenda item. That's why I'm specifically I am E A.
Oh, okay.
You're all lovely and I love your jacket, but you know, for me, that's a big issue and I was not aware of the other two public forums that you talked about.
Yeah, we've already had two meetings on it, so tonight was to discuss it publicly and get public input and tonight we're doing the vote. So, but you can certainly, in Good and Welfare, at the end of the meeting, could certainly provide comments if you'd like.
You'll circle back to me before there is a vote, yes?
No, we won't because Good and Welfare takes place after the voting.
Exactly, so that's my issue. And I think a lot of people came on here expecting to, that was what the email that you sent out suggested. Sign up so you can come and speak specifically on this opting in.
I, I'm not sure what email you're referring to, but I don't know that we sent any email out saying that. So, like I said, we had our two public hearings. You know, so we had two whole meetings dedicated to this.
I was unaware of those and again, the email that I received with this link, it was from. I'll look it up.
John, there's no comment period anymore. It's.
Right.
I'd like to find out what her email says.
Judy Vining sent an email from Long Beach aware with the link in it to people.
Yeah, it was under the Long Beach patch. The city council moved to live streams by.
Okay, but that didn't come from the city, so the city never, never said that, never sent anything. I know, no, I understand, but like I said, we had two meetings to discuss this with the public.
Well, again, I was not aware of that and for me, this spacks of back with the bridge issues, you know, after the storm, things were voted through when nobody was represented and now we're in the middle of a lockdown and I feel like again, we didn't get a voice.
Okay, well, like I said, stick around. You might be happy with the outcome of the vote.
I'm hoping you guys are all for it, you know, are all for opting in and allowing our business owners who are quite well set up if this gets off the ground to do some great revenue for Long Beach.
But again, this is not the time to discuss this. Right now, we're talking about a phone system.
Okay.
So.
Go back to business. I'm sorry.
All right.
So the answer will come tonight, yes?
Yes, it will.
Good luck.
All right, thanks Doran. All right, anyone else Dave? And Mr. Lester?
Yes. Roy, oh, you're unmuted again.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, all right, I'm very confused about this phone system. This originally was proposed August 17th. We were talking about a conversion, as I understand. It says they shall provide the necessary items and services needed to convert the city's current phone system at a cost of $38,192. So, you know, that sounds like a conversion. Then we had, on December 7th, we had the agenda item again. That's when we found out that whoever looked at it did not look at the fact that it didn't have voicemail. And in today's day and age, I find that unusual, okay? And then we were getting the free customer success management service at a conversion cost of $31,230. Now, I'm not sure if that was a reduced conversion cost or an additional conversion cost because it really didn't say anything, but that was pulled off the agenda and then it came up today and now it's at a conversion cost of $51,790. And at the time of the hearing on August 17th, we asked about that and we were told that it was going to, we asked about the yearly cost and we were told that the professional licenses were going to be $18,000 a year. But our future budget, the maintenance costs would go up $18,000 a year, so it actually wasn't costing us. You know, we would be saving money. And now I heard all the numbers tonight and to be honest, the numbers were not listed here, so it's very confusing. I mean, we were told one thing on August 17th and now it seems like it's going to cost us a yearly amount and we're going to get more phones, but one of the big things about this was we were going to rely on the phones we have and that was another question that was asked and we had the current system and all we were going to do is go into the cloud and the thing, as Jamie had said at that time, we won't rely on the phones because you can use other type of equipment like your computers to work as phones. You can also use your cell phones if an issue happens with any connection. You have the ability to use the cell phone or the computer and now I'm finding out we have to get more phones.
Okay, can I, can I enter?
Yeah.
It's not phones, it's actually phone lines. So, we're not physically buying phones. We are actually porting more phone lines into the phone system that weren't included the first time because they're single-line analog phones that are used outside. And being that we're doing this now with the extra phones at a lower cost, we were able to include those. So we're not buying physical phones.
Okay. The scope of the project, Roy, actually changed to be larger in scope to save more money. When they left out the voicemail, we went and we qualified for an enterprise license, which gave us 50 extra additional phone lines that we could bring over, which increased our savings because we can completely eliminate an entire other network of telephones. So it is confusing, but what I've learned through this process and even years before, Jamie can tell you, it literally takes engineers to read these types of proposals to figure out exactly what's going on. If I handed you this telephone bill, you could sit there for a month and you'd never figure it out. You need an engineer to tell you exactly.
You have that little taste in me, Ron.
It's not you, Roy. It's just that you don't do it for a living.
The difference, which even the sales rep didn't catch, is professional to enhanced. So the enhanced doesn't have voicemail, the professional does, but we didn't see the professional because it wasn't on the original quote. It was listed as enhanced. So the problem is that Cisco has so many SKUs that even for stuff they're not charging for, they put a SKU down on the quote. So it's very confusing, including for them. The only person, the only people that can really understand it are engineers. So we finally understood it when the engineer finally sat with us and went through every single line item and let us know.
But Jamie, am I right that the conversion cost has gone from the December 7th $31,000 to the December 21st of $51,000?
Right, but what you're not seeing there is that the original was re-quoted, right? So that total is $34,452.24. That, when they fixed the whole voicemail and licensing thing, that's what the cost came at, which is higher than what we are getting now with the enterprise agreement at $31,000. And that's a difference of $3,222.24. So we actually, by going with the enterprise agreement, we're actually saving $3,000 off of what it would have cost us for just the 209 phones.
Okay, you understand my confusion when I.
Yeah, no, it's confusing to me too.
Cost of $31,000 and a conversion cost today of $51,000.
No, no, but that's the annual cost of the service, right? The $31,000 is the annual cost of the service. Then there's professional services, one-time professional services fees that are in there at $22,520. So that's why you're seeing just a $9,000 savings in the first year because we have to pay the professional services in the first year. The following years, it will be just the $31,000 for the phone service.
It's also, to also add a little bit of clarity, the $19,000 last time wasn't on the money that we requested because it was already a capital product line.
Yes.
It was already included. We separated it out this time to give clarity to the entire process so that we could detail exactly what we were savings. So it's very convoluted and complex. This resolution would be 20 pages long if we put the bill in there. It's, you know, but the numbers actually are better for us now than they were before.
Bottom line, we are currently, if we stay the way we are, we are currently paying $63,090 for the phone system licensing and our phone service.
Not including the replacement hardware of $125,000.
That's not including 125 in a year and a half. In a year and a half, we have to replace the server and that would be about $125,000.
Jamie, could you just, you say here for a first-year conversion cost of $51,000, what is our first-year conversion cost?
That's it, 53,750, not 51.
I'm reading right off the resolution.
Yeah, that might have been a miss.
All right, listen, obviously we're not going to, you know.
Yeah.
Numbers now, so, all right, thank you.
Thanks, so just so we can bottom line this, by going to this new professional format service, we are saving $73,000 over three years and getting more phone lines and better service? Is that correct?
Actually, it's $198,060.
So we're saving almost $200,000 of taxpayer money, so that's the takeaway? We're saving the taxpayers $200,000?
That was a goal from the beginning, yes.
Roy.
Oh, Roy's gone. Well, he can hear you, but he can't respond.
Right, he was right with the $51,000. There's a credit that I didn't include in this, in my notes.
Okay.
There's a credit.
This is a good deal for the taxpayers. They're saving a lot of money. Okay, Dave, anyone else?
Nope, no, no other hands are raised this time.
All right, let's move on to the next item.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase additional user licenses for the city's Microsoft Office 365 software services.
So.
That's Jamie. Are Jamie and Ron.
Yeah, it was for the police department, that's why he's. So when we originally did the move over to the Office 365, we did it as a whole entity, so Long Beach. But it turns out, we have two domains, lbpd.com and longbeachmy.gov with two separate email servers. I was not able to bring in two email servers under one tenant, so I had to split the tenants. So the police department had to get their own tenant and I had to get a tenant. Our licenses were already purchased at that point though, so I had to divide the licenses. When I divided the licenses, they weren't enough for the police department and I ended up having to buy an extra 25 licenses for the police department. And that's what you're seeing now. So we already purchased that for last year and at the end of the year, Microsoft does a true-up. So they reevaluate the number of licenses you have and then they re-adjust the amount you. And that's what we're looking at. It's 25 licenses was $2,700, I think.
The only other thing that's on there is the BI portion.
Right, Power BI.
The Power BI portion of this is, that's the data analytical tool, the software tool that we use to actually grab all of our data on a daily basis, sometimes instantaneously. That gives us the insight into the department, you know, what our calls for services are, what our overtime expenditures are, what our officer activity is and a bunch of other metrics that we put together. In order for me to make this available, you have to pay for licenses for individual users to use it. So the executive staff has their own licenses and then we save money by not purchasing licenses for all of the sergeants. They go into a common area where they see it as one large group. So we're actually saving about 10 or 11 licenses there. These licenses come at a cost of, I think it was $77. $77. Or $7.20 some odd cents a month. So, but if we were to do this the other way, the old way, where we actually wrote an interface with each one of our software programs to get the data to show up on a dashboard, it would be, each interface could cost up to $10,000 plus the fact you'd have to pay a license fee for each one that you use as well.
Right, for the four licenses, it's $352 for the year.
Yeah, it's not a lot of money and the insights, it actually brings us into the 21st century in the police department without having to rebuild all the services that we have. So it's a very, very cost-effective way of doing what we did. And I should add that we were able to do this, we built out the Power BI 100% in-house and we did that with experts from outside who gave us some pro bono works through some connections that we have.
Okay, so any questions from the council members?
No, John, just to comment that there is money in the budget for this.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
I have two questions. First, I'm assuming there's a logical explanation for this, but why is there a separate police department server and lbpd.com?
Technically, technically, we're not supposed to be sharing same networks with police, with law enforcement.
Okay, I knew there was a reason.
As per FIPS regulations, you're not supposed to be sharing public safety networks.
And, okay, and can you tell me how many training sessions were held so that all of city staff knows how to use Office 365? Because it's pretty different.
Yeah, we have not. We have not held any.
Training?
No.
At all?
At all.
It's really.
We had, I provided Microsoft videos for people to be able to do it on their own time. But no formal training.
And the police department didn't really have an issue using it. It was basically just learning how to navigate to the area where Microsoft Word was or Microsoft PowerPoint or whatever it was. The major difference that we saw was when we went to the Outlook, the dashboard that you used on top, the GUI was a little bit different, but the functionality basically remained the same and we do still have the ability to use the old way.
The majority of our licenses are just email licenses, so the only thing they would have to know how to use is the email.
What I would say is that there was no formal training as far as classrooms, but when the staff had any questions, Jamie and the other gentleman in IT always came to make sure that they understood how to use it and the questions really had to do with the emails. We have not, I have yet to hear about anybody not being able to use Word, Excel, Microsoft, the PowerPoint, anything. It was actually the email when we switched over, which was difficult at first, but I believe everybody really likes it because they can get their email anywhere now versus how it was in the past.
The other thing that was very good too, we found that working on light documents, especially with incorporation council and stuff, I can work on a document, they can see the changes as I make it, they can work on the document and we're both working on the same format and we never mix versions again. So that was a big benefit to us as well.
Any more, Karen, or?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the council members? All right, seeing none. Dave, any from the public?
I have no hands raised at this time.
Okay, then let's move on to item eight.
Item eight is a resolution authorizing settlement of certiorari proceedings.
And Ray Flammer is on.
Hi, good evening. This is a proposed tax certiorari settlement for one eighty-five West Park Avenue, also known as Park Place condominium, which has ninety-seven units. It settles four years, two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-one, with a three-year freeze on filing grievances through two thousand twenty-five. It involves thirty-five thousand dollars in refunds and a six percent reduction in assessed value. There will be no interest, and it also avoids the cost of a trial and getting appraisals and possibly outside counsel. The funds are available in the judgment claims budget line. And pretty much covers the tax. Any questions?
All right, any questions from the council members?
It's not, it's more of a specific informational question. Ray, as far as I understand it, there are, the original budget was, I think, five hundred and fifty thousand?
I think this year was five fifty, I'm correct.
And although we haven't spent much in this type of line item, I'll call it. It would be helpful to the future council members. I know in the past, it was requested just for a little better understanding of commercial versus residential, scar certiorari type of thing. But the question I have is, most of the time when these certiorari settlements come before the council, it's usually a multiple-year settlement, probably four years on average. And in general terms, when you do agree on a settlement, it also precludes the applicant or the plaintiff, if you want to call it, from filing in years one, two, and three possibly forward or beyond. So is it possible in the next couple of months that you would be able to or show the future council members how this all works when it comes to multiple-year certioraries? That's all I ask.
Oh, yes, I have, we're planning on having a, I guess, a training session or a seminar in probably January for the, all the council members. People who are the assessment process and tax certiorari in particular.
Because I know, Ray, I understand it because I've dealt with it. But it's like living on a different planet when you're getting something for the first time. So, thank you. That's, that's just a comment, John, not a question.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council? All right, seeing none. Dave, any from the public?
Yep, I have two hands raised. Howie Leibowitz.
Okay.
Go ahead, Howie. Howie Leibowitz? Go ahead, Mr. Leibowitz, you're unmuted.
Yes, hi, okay. I'm a seventeen-and-a-half-year resident of Long Beach, and I love living here. I was wondering if I could raise three things to the city council to think about. Two of them have to do with parking.
Uh, this is, Mr. Leibowitz, this is, this is, this is, we're only talking about right now this particular resolution item. What you want to talk about?
Oh, got it, okay.
Save that for good and welfare at the end.
Okay.
Okay, great. We'll talk to you in a little bit. All right, and who else, Dave?
Roy Lester.
Okay.
Go ahead, Roy, unmute yourself.
Um, just, you know, looking at this, and it's, this is a a period when Long Beach has had an unprecedented rise in value of property. And during this period, this property has gone down six percent. Was that just for settlement, or is the property actually priced six percent less?
Every year, we get an equalization rate from the state. So the property has changed value over the past, every year, the state changes the value for having done reassessments since the early nineties. So it's based on the equalization rate, it's based on what the cap rate is, the effective tax rate, the tax rates change, that alters the value of the property. But it's based on, because it's a non-homestead property, it's based on rentals, not the actual market, the sales market. So it's a little different. The income is capitalized. And it's part of it's a settlement, part of it is, it was all the value.
I mean, I'm looking at NASA for the same piece of property, and it's steadily going up.
That's what kind of just. They just, for the twenty-one, twenty-two, just lowered it to a value lower than ours. Our value is now well under fourteen million, theirs is low, under twelve million. So we actually have a higher value of all the units together.
Okay, they were doing it by each individual one. Okay. Because each individual one seemed to have gone up. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thanks, Roy. Anyone else, Dave?
Kathleen O'Leary.
Okay. Hi, Kathleen. Got to unmute you. There you go.
Yep.
Love your jacket.
Thank you.
I don't really, I was wondering if you could give an explanation of what the word means, and it sounds like it's available to commercial properties. I'm wondering if it's available also for residential, individual residential properties.
When people file a grievance, and if they get denied or unhappy with the decision of the board of assessment review, then they have the right to go to court.
Could you back up? I can't hear you.
When you file a grievance, if you're unhappy with the decision of the board of assessment review, you can then go to court either through the small claims assessment review process, which is for one and two family homes, or through the tax certiorari part of the court to take your assessment through the court system. It's technically available to all properties.
Okay, thank you.
Kathleen, Kathleen, does that answer your question?
Not really.
I didn't think so.
Yeah.
And Ray, this is nothing against you. It's because of, it's, as you know, it's technical. So Kathleen, every year, I'll just equate it to the city of Long Beach now. They post what is called a tentative assessed value, which means tentatively, this is what your value is when they calculate down the road what your future taxes will be, and why they can't tell you at that date is because a budget has not been adopted with the fixed tax rate in it. So when, in the city of Long Beach, I believe, Ray, correct me, the first week of January, they post a tentative assessment value. Residents can look at it, and they could question, challenge, meet, and discuss why they think their values are either usually too high.
Yeah, that's correct. We posted on the January first.
January first. But you have a short period of time, maybe it's two or three weeks. And my personal gut feeling is that from what I've seen, property values and sales and everything else have increased in the past year or two and have not decreased. But having said that, it gives you an opportunity to challenge it. If you're not happy with that, then you have the right to, and I guess, there's a period of time where you could file to have a hearing. That's on your individual property. What we're talking about tonight is more of a technical, income-producing building that is much more complex than an individual homeowner. But I'm sure if you have any question on this topic, because I don't, I have not met any individual person who is not in this field of work that understands this. So I just wanted you to make sure that your question is, any question in this area is not a dumb question. It's, it's, it's the way to be educated in a very complex. And the environment changes annually because the state of New York changes rate structures. So it is, and I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it.
All right, thanks, Kathleen.
Okay, you're welcome.
And everyone should know, this is the same conversation Mike had with his wife on the first date, and this is what hooked her.
Oh, God, we're looking to talk off live.
Okay, Dave, anyone else?
Nope, that was all.
Okay, let's move on to item nine.
Item nine is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase vehicles for the city sanitation department through New York State Office of General Services contracts.
Mr. Fabrizio, Commissioner Fabrizio, do you want to discuss this?
Oh, I see Devon's on. Maybe Devon's gonna do it.
Okay, Devon.
And now Joe's on.
And Joe.
Yep, you guys got to unmute yourselves.
Hey, how you doing?
Hi.
Devon, you want me to take care of it, or you got it? Hi, yes, on November third, two thousand twenty-one, there were three trucks authorized by the city council for purchase, you know, leasing through the operating line of sanitation department. Unfortunately, those three trucks are no longer available, and now they have the part two thousand twenty-two model. So therefore, there's going to be a decrease in cost of fourteen thousand forty-three eighteen. The two thousand twenty-one cost was one twenty-three, seven, seven eighteen. A new value for two thousand twenty-three, one thirty-eight, four hundred. So again, the difference is fourteen thousand twenty-three eighteen. So this is solely purchased two thousand twenty-two trucks, three of them that is, instead of two thousand twenty-one trucks. And they're all at three different.
All right, so it's the same model, just a twenty-two model, twenty-twenty-two instead of twenty-twenty-one models?
Correct, yes.
All right, any questions from the council members?
No, just a comment, John. The funds are available in this year's budget, Joe.
Right.
Correct, thank you.
Yep. Liz?
Commissioner, are we going to be able to receive these trucks on time because of all of the issues going on in the world?
I do not know. Devon might be able to answer that a little better. Devon, have you have the idea on the schedule delivery?
Yes, the crew cab, we should be receiving the end of December, which is in a week or two, which they actually have in stock. And the other two vehicles, we should receive in April or May. So it's actually probably faster this way to receive the vehicle.
Oh, that's great.
That's good.
All right, and is the wait until, till April, May, that's, I assume, due to the the supply chain backlog, that they just, it's an inventory issue?
Yes.
Yeah, with them having the trucks on the lot?
Yeah, they actually have them, so they already been on order. And the people that ordered them actually didn't want them. So they're gonna give them to us.
Oh, okay.
So we got lucky. So it's a good deal, I would say.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the council? All right, seeing none. Dave, any from the public?
Yes, Roy Lester.
Okay.
Go ahead, Roy, unmute yourself.
I'm unmuted. Okay, on November third, we were buying these trucks from a bidder, the lowest responsible bidder. And we were paying fifteen thousand less for them. Why, what happened? Somebody came in and, and gave us a bid and then didn't have them?
They were buying these off New York State Office of General Services contracts.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand you.
Yeah, Joe, you're all muffled, Joe.
I'm sorry, I'm like, you hear me now?
A little better.
A little better, yeah.
I'm having problems with my audio. The New York State Office of General Services contract is where they were purchased off of, so it wasn't a bid, it was off state contract. Apparently, they're not available.
It was not a bid?
No, it's purchased off the New York State Office of General Services contract. It's not a bid, off state contract.
Because the resolution on November third says, whereas Van Bortle Ford was the lowest responsible bidder.
Well, that's a, that's a vendor approved the New York State Office of General Services contract.
So it's not, okay.
What it was, Roy, was that we get, we were getting the vehicles off of a state contract. So she sends out, meaning the procurement manager sends out the information to all that's on the list, the state contract. They came back with a price, and sometimes it might be considered as a bid, but it's only with the people that we can use from the state. And we were not able to get the trucks after they gave us the amount. So we had to look for additional trucks, and we got these also with someone from the state that we use.
But what I'm trying to understand, Donna, is if they, they gave us whatever you want to call it, a bid or not a bid, or something like that, and then we weren't able to get them.
No, they, they were no longer available when we went to go get them.
And how, and do we know that these are going to be available?
As Mr. Parker just stated, after this is approved tonight, we will receive one by the end of this month, and the other two by the end of April.
End of April?
April, yes.
But they're available now?
No, one is available now in the month of December. The other two, we will receive in April.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the public, Dave?
No other hands are raised.
All right, let's move on to item ten.
Item ten is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the agreement for engineering services needed for de-commissioning, removal, and replacement of the city's water supply standpipe.
Yeah, this is Joe again from Public Works. The original agreement was to prepare one bid for the removal of the existing one-point-zero-million-gallon standpipe and to install a new structure for one hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. Unfortunately, the tank started showing deterioration. It actually started to leak about halfway up the tank. Therefore, we had the D and B engineers and architects prepare a totally separate bid and also perform inspection services for the removal of the one-gallon-down standpipe, which is a project that we did last year. Therefore, what was anticipated to be a one, one project has now turned into two projects. One of the projects was to remove demolition of the one-million-gallon standpipe, and the second one now is going to be for building or erecting a new one-point-two-five-million-gallon water tower. And D and B's engineers and architects is currently in the process of preparing plans for the new one-point-two-five-million-gallon water tower, which should be hopefully available by the end of next, or middle of next year. Another reason for this request, the increase, is that we requested that D and B prepare, D and B engineers and architects that is preparing grant last year under the Environmental Utilities Corporation WEA program. That was part of the change, and we actually did not get that grant. Unfortunately, we were denied, but they did prepare the application. So therefore, I recommend approving the additional seventy-four thousand dollars to cover the course of this additional work that D and B engineers and architects perform on this funding available in the next quarter of this work.
Okay, are there any questions from the council members? All right, seeing none. Dave, do we have any from the public?
At this time.
All right, then let's move on to item eleven.
Item eleven is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year.
That's Commissioner Fabrizio.
Hello again. This is a resolution to replenish the overtime salary drawing in the water purification plant by fifteen thousand two hundred and ninety-six dollars. The plant operators operate the facility on three shifts, twenty-four hours a day, seven days per week. The department recently had a severe COVID outbreak, whereby five of the nine employees were stricken with the illness. The result was overtime for the employees, but they had to cover various shifts. Right now, they have seventy-five thousand budgeted and have utilized forty-six thousand five twenty-eight, four seventy-six cents. So they still are in budget, this is to replenish it, cover the This is to replenish it, cover these, um, this unfortunate outbreak of, of COVID facility.
All right, Joe, this is coming from the regular salary line. Is this the position that they didn't fill?
That's correct. That's where the money's coming from.
Okay. All right. Uh, any questions from the, uh, from the council members? All right, seeing none. Dave, any from the public?
No questions at this time.
Okay, let's move on to item twelve.
Item twelve is also a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year.
That would be Scott Kimmons.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, this is the transfer of approximately a little over twenty-five hundred dollars for the purchase of PPE for our city employees, including our police department. Uh, we did have a larger stock that we've had and has dwindled down. We are required to supply our employees with the proper PPE to keep them safe while dealing with the public. Uh, so presently, the OEM itself does not have a budget. And the central administration safety equipment line was unfunded this year. So, uh, Ina had the, decided that we would fund that line with a transfer from the contingency fund for us to purchase, uh, masks and gloves for our city employees.
Okay, any questions from the council?
No, just a gentle comment, John. Um, along the lines of what Scott said, you know, I had checked a lot of these, uh, numbers in advance. And I had asked, uh, where is this account number? I don't see it in the budget. And that, just to what Commissioner Kevin said, you have to establish the account line, then fund it through the budget process, which we're doing now. And he gave the description of what it's used for, the PPE. And I would imagine, um, that unfortunately, I don't know if we're gonna have enough PPE supplies to get through what we're going through now. But I also remember in the past, Commissioner Kimmens and others, that there were large donations, I think, um, by a company, um, that helped us in a prior year when we were, um, going through this as well. So, um, I just want to thank you just for allowing me to speak. But yes, the, the account line had to be established. It wasn't in the budget. It is being done now. It's a small dollar amount relatively. And, um, that was it. But the, it was checked, the, the numbers. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions or comment from the council? All right, seeing none. Dave, any from the public?
No questions from the public.
Okay, let's move on to item thirteen.
Item thirteen is a resolution authorizing budget amendments to the community development budget funds.
Um, that would be Monique.
Hello, can anyone hear me? Great. Um, this is just a transfer of twenty thousand dollars from a COVID CDBG, um, budget that we had. Um, the reason for the transfer is, 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 sorry, my kids, they are aligned to our goals with CDBG, our timing, our use of funds and the line that it's in. So this line was previously used for social ambassadors and after we met with Nesta County Community Development, our urgency to use that and to provide those social distance ambassadors. Um, obviously, due to timing, uh, no longer happened. We've been advised to transfer over the funds, um, to whatever line that was left over in that contract, which was only the Long Beach Public Library. The good thing is that we have been working with the public, with the library to assist with providing jobs. So we're just changing the narrative. Instead of offering jobs for social distance ambassadors, is creating a program in collaboration with the Long Beach to make more city residents employable. So these funds will use as soft costs, program delivery costs and startup. The library already used their fund that was pre-awarded of ten thousand dollars. Um, and we're gonna give them an extra couple of thousands once we finish our meeting, uh, to purchase, uh, more laptops with this. So they get an increase from their ten and we use the remaining money to start the program. Sorry for the noise in the background.
Okay, so this is just moving grant money, right? So we're not moving taxpayer money. This is grant money.
Correct, it is grant money.
Okay, so, uh, any questions from the council? Liz?
Monique, is this the program that you and the city manager spoke about for, um, literacy for our employees?
Actually, no, this supplement, supplements that program. So this was a program that already existed, predates myself, but the Long Beach Library had already started these, uh, programs remotely during COVID. Um, so we just added on to that. And then the caveat is that it adds on to the adult learning literacy, uh, all about making our people employable and increasing the economic development of the city residents.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions from the council? All right, here are none. Dave, any from the public?
None from the public.
Okay, let's move on to item fourteen.
Item fourteen is a resolution to schedule a special meeting of the council on Saturday, January 1st, twenty twenty-two at 1:00 P. M.
All right, I guess, well, nobody's volunteering, but this is one's pretty straightforward. This is, so when, uh, the new council, uh, takes, uh, gets sworn in on January 1st, we have to hold a meeting to vote for a temporary president, which is slang for the vice president and then the president. So this is just, um, identifying that meeting so we could, uh, vote for the vice president and the president of the next, of the new council. So anybody got any questions or comments? And I heard Mike.
Yeah, just a general question. Will there be limitations to the attendance that we know of on January 1st?
Well, as John, yeah, as John said earlier, what we, we are going, instead of doing the normal inauguration ceremony where there would be people in the audience and flags and singing and benedictions, uh, this is really gonna be a very low-key COVID, um, focused. You know, I, I mean, I, I'm sure Roy will have his wife there and his kids and my wife will be there, but, um, th- this will be, uh, uh, low-key, small number of people, spread out.
Spread out, okay, that's.
And then hopefully at some point, we'll be able to do the more formal ceremony.
Good, okay. Just was interested myself, thank you.
No, with the, with the positivity rates what they are, um, it just, we, we couldn't do it.
Totally makes sense, thank you.
So, uh, any other comments or questions from the council? All right, seeing none. Dave, any from the public?
Nope, no questions from the public.
Okay, let's move on to item fifteen.
So item fifteen is a resolution authorizing publication of notice of public hearing of an application to waive Wall Street parking requirements for premise sixty-four West Park Avenue, third floor for a tattoo studio. This items for publication, all your hearing will be held January 4th, twenty twenty-two at 7:00 P. M. On to the voting. Get the receipt here. And we're gonna start with item number four, which is a local law amending subpart C of related acts related to the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding a local law opting out of licensing and establishing onsite cannabis consumption establishments within the city of Long Beach pursuant to cannabis law, section one thirty-one. Who introduces move the adoption of this item?
I will. Karen, Karen could be first.
Second? Do I have a second?
I thought, I thought I just heard Karen and Liz. Is that what I heard?
Liz, Liz, are you seconding that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item five is a local law amending subpart C of related acts related to the charter of the city of Long Beach regarding a local law opting out of licensing and establishing retail cannabis dispensaries within the city of Long Beach pursuant to cannabis law, section one thirty-one. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
I just wanted to thank everyone for sending their emails and giving us their information. Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item six is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the agreement with Core BTS, a partner of Cisco Systems. We introduce the move the adoption of this item.
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Uh, thank you, Jamie, Ron Walsh and staff. Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Thank you again, Jamie, Commissioner. Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Who doesn't like saving two hundred thousand bucks? Yes.
Item seven is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase additional user licenses for the city's Microsoft Office three sixty-five software services. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Who, who got that first?
We all will.
We all, yeah.
Okay.
Take your pick.
I, I need one. Who, who will take first?
I heard Karen, Karen will.
Okay, second?
I will.
Uh, Liz, go ahead.
Okay, voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes, and I'd like to just take a personal note to thank Russell for my, for his assistance.
Uh, Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item eight is a resolution authorizing settlement of sociability proceedings. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item nine is a resolution authorizing the city manager to purchase vehicles for the city's sanitation department through New York State Office of General Services contracts. Who introduces move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item ten is a resolution authorizing the city manager to amend the agreement for engineering services needed for the decommissioning, removal and replacement of the city's water supply standpipe. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Excuse me. Item eleven is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
No.
Uh, Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item twelve is a resolution authorizing transfer of funds for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item thirteen is a resolution authorizing budget amendments to the community development budget funds. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will.
Second?
I will.
Karen.
Okay. Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Item fourteen is a resolution to schedule a special meeting of the city council on Saturday, January 1st, twenty twenty-two at 1:00 P. M. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I will. Oh, Scott, good.
Second?
Okay.
I will.
Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan. Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
And finally, item fifteen is a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of public hearing of an application to waive the Wall Street parking requirements for premise sixty-four West Park Avenue, third floor for a tattoo studio. Would you just move the adoption of this item?
I, I will.
Second?
I will.
Okay.
Okay. Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
All right, and go ahead. Well, before we close, uh, the meeting, uh, Scott, uh, wanted to, uh,
Thank you. Thank you, President Bendo. I appreciate that. And thank you for your kind remarks earlier tonight. And, um, again, thank you to Fran Adelson. I prepared this before, uh, that was read. So I just wanted to thank the residents for their trust and faith in allowing me the privilege and honor of representing Long Beach for over the past ten years. Serving in the city council has truly been a gift to me, getting to meet and to work with and to work for the residents, the civic groups and businesses from every part of our beautiful city. I want to thank our incredibly dedicated city staff, our CSEA and its leadership under the great John Mooney, all of our first responders, professional and volunteer, our police, our auxiliary police, our lifeguards and all of our firefighters and paramedics. Thank you to those council members and administrations I've had the good fortune to work with, including this council, Donna and prior councils. If I miss anybody, it's inadvertent and I apologize. Specifically, I want to thank the honorable Fran Adelson. I prepared this before I, I knew she submitted something, uh, for her guidance, professionalism and friendship over the years. Most of all, uh, I want to thank my family for generously allowing me to sacrifice our family time so I could serve our city. I especially want to thank my beautiful wife Karen and our wonderful daughter Ashley, and I look forward to spending more time with them. Lastly, I wish the incoming council members the best of luck and I have full faith and confidence in the new council leadership going forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
And just, uh, one other thing we should acknowledge too, before we get, I guess, uh, we didn't say anything about at the beginning of the meeting, but, uh, the people who organized the electric light parade as well. Uh, big success this year. Uh, if you looked up and down the streets, it, they were a lot of people out there this year. So, uh, and I guess at the, uh, January Chamber of Commerce meeting, they'll be giving out the awards for all the various categories, uh, for the floats. So, uh, Mother Nature tried to throw us a curve ball, but we, we fought back and, and held the event. So, uh, with that, I guess we can close the, uh, meeting and move on to good and welfare.
Hey, do I have a motion to close?
I move.
Second?
Come on, Mike, here it is, your chance.
Uh, I want to make a, Scott, you made the motion. You know what? I'll second Scott.
Thank you. Voting, Councilmember Delory.
Yes.
Councilmember Mandell.
Yes.
Councilmember Trastan.
Yes.
Vice President McGinnis.
Yes.
President Bendo.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on to good and welfare now, so, um,
I just want to thank John, everybody here. Uh, Dave, thank you for all of the two years of counting all of these motions, agendas, seconds and keeping us straight. Appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Yep. All right, so good and welfare, uh, you get three minutes and, uh, can raise your hand and.
Yeah, folks, use the raise your hand function if you wish to speak. We'll go at you one at a time. You'll get three minutes, still get three minutes. Um, when we get close, when the, somebody, somebody's echoing there. Um, you'll hear the alarm. I will, I will unmute myself and have the alarm go off when your three minutes is up. So if you hear the beeping in the background, that means your time is up. So first up, we have, uh, Howie Leibowitz.
Hi there. Uh, I thank you for this opportunity. Hi, um, thank you for this opportunity. I thank you all for your hard work, cause I know running organizations is difficult, so running local government's gotta be even more difficult. Okay? Um, I am a seventeen and a half year resident of Long Beach and I love it here and I'd like to see if we can make a couple. see if we can make a couple of improvements. One is, as we all know, parking is at a premium here, and I live in an apartment building that has no parking available, so it's always street parked. I live on Lincoln and Broadway. I was wondering, due to the number of motorcycles that are in the area, or certainly down by me, they take up car spots on the street, whether they're line spots or they're parked directly on a street, they take up car spots. Is there any way we can have the city make cutouts in the islands on any of the streets that have islands, cutouts at either end or both ends, so that this way motorcyclists can park their bikes without fear of them getting knocked over, and they have their dedicated spots? That's number one. Number two, a little bit more costly, but as we all know, going down Broadway, we have to, if we want to make a left turn or a U-turn, I should say a U-turn, we always have to wait at the light, and then sometimes it's the second light that we have to wait for. Is there any way, as I've seen in other cities, to make cutouts prior to the intersection at the end of the parking islands with stop signs, so that this way it'll be visible, and cars don't have to worry about getting slammed when they make that left turn? Number three, everybody knows about pooper-scooper laws, but we live in a beach town. People have their dogs urinate all over the place, sides of buildings, in the street, you know, on the sidewalks in general, wherever they want to go. Is there any way we can get some legislation talked about having dog owners bring spray bottles with them, with water? Their dogs mess the streets, the sidewalks, spray it down so it's not so disgusting? So, that's my thought. Actually, I have one last thing. I'm not going to get into it now, because three is enough. I'm just hoping to bring it up, and hopefully we could do something about it.
All right. Well, thanks. I see our police commissioner was noodling away there at that, so I guess that's something our... The first two, I guess, is something maybe our traffic and parking people can look at the possibility of, and the urinating.
I appreciate it.
I guess that's a... That would be a kind of a public information kind of campaign that we probably would do through social media or something like that, so again, maybe something our folks in that area can look at.
Okay, actually, I do want to mention the last thing, if I may. The bathrooms, the ladies' bathrooms in particular, when you're coming off the boardwalk, the door opens, and anybody and everybody can look into the ladies' room, and usually during the spring and summer, and even into the fall, the door is held open by some sort of kickstand, for want of a better term. It's really demeaning, it's really disgusting, and I don't know who thought of the placement of the doors. Is there any way to get the doors placed on the other side of the doorway? So that this way, you don't have people looking into the bathrooms, and the women may feel a little bit less conscious about it. So I know it's like that by Lincoln. Maybe somebody could take a look into it. Thank you, I'm done.
Okay. All right, thanks. All right, who's next, Dave?
Uh, William Depper.
Ah, Mr. Depper.
Hi, good evening, everybody, and thank you for going back to Zoom meetings. Just have a couple of things for the police commissioner. I listened to his report when I had mentioned about the tint gun being used on the, like, car windows, and I didn't hear him address anything as to whether he started using it and implementing it. Also, I brought to Ms. Gayden's attention yesterday a couple of pictures of graffiti that was written on the boardwalk fire exit doors of the assisted living here at Laurelton, and she told me that he is addressing it. Also, are the school bus cameras working, because I see a lot of cars zoomed through the light, and the bus stops are right there, and they just zoom right on by the bus as the kids are getting on? And let's see, I'll leave it to three also, but the new lines that are being put up, I hope Mr. Roman isn't putting the lines up like the ones I saw behind him in the background where they were all loose hanging over him.
Oh, you're talking about the wires. Oh, yeah, that's...
Yeah, because in 2021, loose wires like that should not be hanging.
Okay.
In any kind of building.
We'll let him know. Brian?
So, the tinted windows on vehicles, our officers actually do enforce that when they see somebody actually who have tint, improper tints on their windows. Generally speaking, you're not allowed to have tint on the front driver's side window. The other windows on the car, you are allowed, not the front windshield either. Generally, the other windows are permitted to have tint, and there's a permissible level of tint as well, which is a 10% tint. So our offices do deal with that. With regard to the graffiti, yes, we have seen recently an uptick in graffiti, and we have a particular graffiti artist who just came out of the woodworks lately and is doing these on the boardwalk. We kind of this week were just looking at things, and I spoke with Tommy Counter this morning and last night. They did a lot of painting over today, and we're going to be painting those things over as fast as they pop up. As most people know, with graffiti, the point of a graffiti artist is to have his graffiti last, so we try our best to get on top of this, and it's funny that you brought this up, Mr. Depper, but I actually was doing some research on graffiti over the weekend, I have some life, right? And watched the documentary on it as well, just to see if we were handling it correctly. And the best way to deal with this is to actually paint it over as quickly as possible. Believe it or not, unless it's someone who's a juvenile, arresting them and holding them accountable for their actions really doesn't stop them, it just tends to move them into a more aggressive face in other areas. So what does stop them is painting it over as fast as we can. We also notify people in their buildings that are private residences to get it down as quick as possible as well, to help discourage the graffiti also. I think those were the two questions you had for me.
Just about the school bus cameras.
Yeah, so I'm not familiar with whether or not they're operating or not, that's actually a school district thing, but those school bus cameras don't issue summonses right now. I know that there's a move on the part of the city to try and get those installed for this particular school district, so that when people pass by the school bus, they actually get some of this. But if you know of a particular location where that's happening, I can focus the attention of my officers there, and we'll get you some tickets if it happens, I can tell you that. Nobody likes people driving past a school bus.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, Dave, who's next?
Kathleen O'Leary.
And welcome back.
Hi there. Okay, I have been doing some analysis on the cost of beaches for non-residents in the area, and we recently took a loss at the beach this summer for a variety of reasons. But, you know, we're charging non-residents $15 a person. Point Lookout is charging non-residents $25 a day to park. Lido is doing the same. Nickerson is charging $30 a day to park for non-leisure pass holders, and then Gilgo and Cedar Beaches are paying $20, or, you know, charging $20 to park at the beaches. I know that we raised the beach fees, and, you know, I know it's not a popular thing to do, but, you know, I think the least painful way to raise our fees, and, you know, we have a gorgeous beach, I think we should be making a profit on it, not a loss. I think the easiest and most least painful way to do it is to raise it on non-residents, and at least get ourselves competitive with the beaches around us on the Barrier Island and the, and Long Island in general. And, let's see, you know, I think it would be, you could do a cost-benefit of analysis by counting the number of non-residents we had on the beach this past summer and playing around with raising the fee to $20, $25. The one caveat with this is, I would say, for non-resident families, a price accommodation would need to be made for children. You know, in these other areas, they're charging by the carload. You know, we don't have that, but I think somehow that might be something we might want to think about in the future, obtaining some parking area and charging for it. A few summers ago, I saw people in the East End trying to charge like 20, 30 bucks a day just to park in their driveway to go to the beach. So I will email this to you. It's a suggestion for maybe next year. Thank you.
Sure. All right, that's great. We'll hand it off, because we do have, as we've talked about, we had a working meeting about this not long ago, about the beach and trying to come up with some ways to at least get the beach to break even, so we'll certainly pass that along to those, to the group.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, who's next, Dave?
Judy Vining.
Hi, Judy.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. I really wanted to thank all of you, the council, for taking what was a difficult but important step in protecting our city and taking a wait-and-see attitude, in listening and hearing all of the opinions and everybody's, as well as delving into the research and landing where practically all of Nassau County has landed, so, which really goes a long way to protecting and for us to be able to decide how and what we want in our city. As an aside, I did watch the Cannabis Management Board Office, Office of Cannabis Management meeting. They meet once a month. They decided this month to map out where they might put their offices, and they will meet again in January, so this is going to be a very long process and very, very smart of all of you to take this position so that we can all wait and see what is coming down from Albany. So again, I wanted to thank you. I wanted to thank you for being open to it, and that's it.
Okay, thanks, Judy. And just, just so people understand, by the way, in case people haven't been following this, if this... So the option was, if the city did nothing, the city would, was opted in to retail dispensaries of cannabis and onsite consumption sites forever. By opting out, the city can choose to opt back in, or there could be a public referendum as well, if the public wants to vote on it. So opting out gives the city much more flexibility on what it can do, much more options. So just, so people understand, just because there's a vote to opt out, that can change, whereas if we went the other way, that could never change. So, all right, I see Mr. Lester is coming up from the batter's box, so almost Councilman Lester.
Okay, I'm on.
You are.
All right. Basically, just for Scott and Mike, I just wanted to say thanks. You guys are tremendous. I kind of, in a way, I'm sorry that I'm not serving with either of you, because both of you are great. I don't think I've ever had a cross word with either one of you, and I know, Scott, you were president during Sandy, I was president of the school board during Sandy, and it was a miserable time, and I want to thank you for that. You did great for the city, and I'll never forget it. And Mike, you know what? I don't know if this is a good thing or a bad thing, but you seem to get me, and I want to thank you for that. I know you, you've tried really hard, and I think you've been a tremendous councilman, and thank you. That's all I can say. Thank you.
I could just, Roy, thank you for those words, and I remember working with you while you were president of the school board, so I'm confident the city's in good hands with this team coming in, and thank you for your kind words.
Thank you.
And if I may comment, Roy, thank you. You know, we always, when we did speak, even before I was on the council, we had respectful dialogue, even though we didn't always see things the same. I listened to your points, you listened to mine. They're both, I would like to think both well-thought-out. You know, you've had a lifetime of public service, which is greatly appreciated. Most people are, it's not an easy thing to do. You give up your time with your family, and, you know, there's other things I'm sure that are more pleasurable to do. But I thank you for standing, doing this, and showing your concern for the betterment of the city of Long Beach, and collectively with the members that are still there in 2022 and '23, I feel you have, the city has a very good team, the council and everybody else, so... But on a rather humorous end to this, I will certainly, when the meetings go back in public, hopefully, as I wipe off your microphone, I hopefully you will give me the opportunity to do the same.
Thanks, Roy. Let me just ask one question. Do former councilmen get dispensation from the three-minute rule? No answer. I noticed no answer. Okay, thanks.
All right, see you later, Roy. All right, who's next, Dave?
That's it.
That's it. All right, well, everyone, whatever you celebrate, whether it's Hanukkah, Christmas, Kwanzaa, Festivus, this is a time for all of us to come together, be thankful for what we have on behalf of the council, the administration, the staff. Everybody, please have a safe, healthy, happy holidays. Stay safe. Again, Mike, Scott, thank you so much for your service to the city. I know you did it for those big paychecks, but, but, nope, you tackled some big problems, and you took them head-on, you didn't shy away. So again, everyone, please, again, stay safe, wear your mask. Things are going in the wrong direction, but have some safe, healthy, and happy holidays, and good night.
Thank you.
All right, everybody, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
All right, happy holidays.
Stay safe.
Bye, Mike, bye, Scott.
Thank you.